Okay, thank you ladies and gentlemen for joining us November 2nd, 2015 for our selectmen's meeting. Would everyone please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Oops. We lost a great member of Millville this past week, Brooks Herrick. He was a member of the Finance Committee for quite some time and even though he battled the sickness for quite some time, never even showed up at town meetings in a wheelchair. Walker was very determined and he'll be greatly missed by the town and friends and family. So our hearts go out to his family. And so just a short moment of silence for Brooks. Just a reminder from the Treasurer Collector, quarterly tax payments were due today. Reminder, Town Hall offices will be closed next Wednesday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. And the Board extends sincere appreciation to all those who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces and thank you so much for your service. That's it for announcements. Next we have approval of minutes and warrants. We have minutes from October 19th at 6:00 PM.
Mr. Baker absent at this meeting.
Motion approved in meeting at minutes of October 19th, 6:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Next we have October 19th, 7:00 PM, 2015. And all were present with the exception of Mr. Baker.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 19th, 7:00 PM.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I do have warrants this evening. First is the payroll warrant for the pay period ending October 31st. The amount is $34,075. I have the payroll deduction warrant for the last pay period, October 19th, 2015, in the amount of $4,974.30. And I have two vendor warrants, one in the amount of $441 and the other in the amount of $569,985.85. And I just call to the Board's attention, the payment to the BMR in the amount of $555,778. That's how that's as high as it is.
Motion to accept is read.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, next we have Colonial Power, who is an invited guest this evening and they're going to explain what they would like to do for us and for not only, you know, everybody in the town, not just town buildings. Anybody, Brian Murphy is the representative and then anyone else who would like to come forward as well. Yes, sit right here. Yeah?
Good evening, let me introduce myself, Leo Sullivan with Colonial Power. Brian Murphy.
Brian.
And we have some fellow compatriots in the back here. Anthony Bornerato and Perry Bernstein.
Thank you for coming.
All of us with about 30-plus years in the business. So we're pretty well versed in aggregation and also energy in general.
So I, you know, I did a sort of a document dump on Helen earlier today. So at your places, I hope you have a series of documents that are designed to help jump-start the program that you had initiated with the Hampshire Council of Governments but which ultimately languished and was not approved by the Department of Public Utilities. Earlier this year, late last month, you might have received a communication from Hampshire Council suggesting that the town utilize our services to get you over the goal line. So the town still has a viable program. You took the appropriate votes at town meeting. The Board has made appropriate decisions along the way. We just need to fix things a little bit and get you back on track. And we've done that almost 30 times for 30 communities in Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So we know what we're doing and we can sort of right the ship and get you back on track and get you out to bid as soon as possible. So in order to expedite that, I decided to give Helen everything upfront, you know, everything that we will need initially. Normally this process would take much longer, but since you've been sort of idling for so long, I wanted to help, you know, get it going for you. There are a number of things and most of my contact will be with Helen or the town clerk just for record-keeping purposes. We're going to put together all these documents and take them to the Department of Energy Resources and to the Department of Public Utilities for you if you want to move forward with us. I'll let the documents speak for themselves. There is quite a lot of reading there. None of it's very exciting. And so I will entertain questions about what you think the next step should be rather than just have me talk at you for the next 15 minutes or so. I do have a question for you. What's your understanding of where you are in this process right now and your recollection of, you know, how you got here with the Hampshire Council over the last couple of years? Were you all on the Board at the time or has there been change over?
Yep.
No changes?
Yep.
That's good.
Let's see. One question, I know a lot of people have asked me and you could probably answer the question much, much better. You know, if people choose to, you know, change their, part of their power from National Grid or, you know, what's going to happen if a tree falls on their wire? That's the biggest question.
That's the big one, yeah, always, always.
And then what happens?
So, yes, so let's publicly say. And if National Grid was here, they would say the same thing. They own the poles and wires.
Okay.
They don't care where the electrons come from. And that's what you're changing is where the power's generated from and what price you pay for it.
Right.
But they own the infrastructure and they're very proud of their infrastructure and they will fix it when it breaks. And they will read your meter and they will send you the bill. And so it's an all-inclusive bill. It's not like you're going to get a bill from the town or the bill from a power supplier. It's all funneled through National Grid.
Okay.
And they do support these programs because they don't really like charging you 13 or 16 cents a kilowatt hour either.
Right.
They would rather see the town take control, do something for its residents and small businesses and try to, you know, change the paradigm if you will.
Additionally, National Grid, that part of their business is still regulated. So we are only in the deregulated portion of the law is the fact that we can change the source of the supply, the electrons only.
Okay.
So that's all we're talking about is just the electric supply. Grid still is in charge of all the billing, all of the maintenance. It's all, that part of it is still regulated by the government.
Okay.
So they have to do it.
Right.
Another thing that I think is important for the public to be aware of is that these programs are gaining popularity and traction across the state. And initially, you know, when you want to change something, people say, well, wait a second, why do I want to change? You know, and they get skeptical and that's healthy. But the difference between a town program is its transparency. Many of you have probably received offers in the mail or maybe even phone solicitations from energy companies over the last 12 to 18 months saying, "We can save you money and we'll do this for you and that for you." And a lot of times it's too good to be true. And there's a lot of fine print in there and a lot of our fellow citizens get taken advantage of. And in a town program, it's all above board. It's recorded publicly. These contracts are open to public inspection. There's no fine print. There's no hidden fees. There's none of the stuff that you get if you as a single consumer tried to do this stuff on your own. So there is power in numbers and that's what the town has the ability to leverage on behalf of their citizens.
And also professional management ourselves to watch it and to watch the changes in the marketplace and to take advantage of market swings which are very volatile and very extreme at some times. So you have us to help you guide through the morass of the energy business which is quite volatile.
I have a question for you guys. How does this work for us who are taking advantage of solar this year?
Yeah, good question.
Advantage of what?
Solar. So I've installed solar.
That's a good question, that's fine.
My first couple of electric bills were credits.
You're better off.
So how does that?
You get, when you're using energy, you'll pay the town's rate. When you're selling it, you get paid National Grid's rate.
Right.
You know, so if the town's rate is lower than National Grid, win-win for you, you know? So anybody that has solar, this is just one more good thing for them.
And the aggregator on the solar end, that's different from you.
That is different, yeah.
Okay.
You know, the thing, the important thing, everything's important, right? But another thing for people to remember is it's an opt-out program. In order to leverage the pool, the buying pool, we have to presume that most people are going to participate. We can't knock on everybody's door.
Right.
And no one from the town is, and to say this to the people, no one from the town is going to come to your door. If they're coming to your door telling you they're from the town of Millville about energy, scam. All right, so this will be done, you know, through the mail, through routine communication channels and it's an opt-out program. If you don't want the town's program, you send a prepaid postcard back to us. If you do like the town's rate, sit back and do nothing.
Another way to look at that is when you see Grid's portion of the bill that comes to you, this is what qualifies. So our aggregated price will qualify for that portion of the bill. So you're winning on both sides.
And you guys, just let's be transparent because everybody's wondering it. So you guys make your money on the rate you negotiate with them and then it's sold to us. You make some kind of vig.
There's, exactly said. It's in our contract with the town and it's in your aggregation plan and it'll be in whatever contract Helen executes on your behalf with the competitive supplier.
Okay.
And it's a fee per kilowatt hour.
So basically what you're saying is you guys do not generate electric at all.
No.
You guys buy electric off the grid from, you want so much every year, you get a flat rate in this net, you sell it to the consumer.
In fact, we don't.
Basically what it comes down to. You guys do not generate, you don't own the poles, you don't do anything. So my question now is if Mass Electric, if I'm not mistaken, somebody can shine in on this, did they raise, trying to raise their rates?
They're going to.
Okay, so with them raising their rates, that means the meter readers, the guys in the car and this and that, their rates go up. So that means our rate's going to go up somewhere in this pool. How do you, how do you generate to make that so it doesn't go up on the people in the town? Because you know as well as I do, and I think we're all on the same page, that if their rate goes up and they say, "Well, we were getting $5, now we want $6.50," somebody's got to eat that. And if they lay it on you, then you're going to be putting it on us.
I think.
So how do you freeze your rate?
Leo alluded to this earlier. The portion of the bill that pays for the guys in the hard hats is on the delivery half of the bill. Those rates are regulated and they, every few years, petition the State's Department of Public Utilities for rates.
I understand, but what you're saying now is that if their rate goes up, that's one part of the goal, but your rate will stay the same. So there's no, what you're saying is the rate is not going to be the same because if somebody raises it up, we're going to have to pay for that, but your rate will stay the same.
Let me take a stab at it.
Go ahead.
Okay, the National Grid bill has two parts to it. As the distribution, the billing, the maintenance, we are only talking about the electron. We are only talking about the supply portion and those rates are constant.
I understand that, but that goes up and down.
So we're going to, all right, but when it goes up and down for the grid also, but they go out twice a year and they buy half their load. So in January, well, in their case, I believe it's November, in November they go out and buy half of their load and they blend that with the other half that they bought last year. So they just keep rolling that. They don't care what the market is and they just buy whatever the rate is in that November and that May when they could go twice a year.
They have to care about what the market is, come on now.
They pass through.
Yeah, but they have to care what the market, because the market goes up and down. These are businessmen.
If I may interrupt, I think an easy way to say it, if I may, is your supply portion and the portion that we're going to go out and shop for you is a fixed rate or a rate for a term. So you don't have to worry about what's going on in the market and what kind of.
That I understand, okay? It's a fixed rate and what he's saying, I think what you're trying to say is your portion stays at a certain rate for three years.
Sure.
Correct.
But the other half can go up and there's nothing you can do about it.
And we do it.
So basically it's not a fixed rate across the board.
It's not a fixed rate for the entire bill.
Yeah.
And that's what's happening to you right now. Your delivery side's going up and down and your supply side's going up and down.
That's correct.
So what we're doing is we're fixing the target for you.
So what I'm trying to do with the consumer, our taxpayers here, is let them understand that it's not a fixed rate across the board because there's flux there from the other half. You're going to give us a package for a fixed rate for so many years or whatever, how, right, for supply and electric.
For the supply portion.
But the other half, that's not fixed. That can go up.
Yes, in fact, it only goes up. It never goes down.
And that.
Well, I said it's going to go up. So I just want everybody to understand that it isn't all pieces of cream that the way it comes out because there's more to the pot than what's being said.
But I think they're regulated on how much they can go up.
Well, I understand that, but I don't want the people to have.
But not on the supply portion.
I didn't say the supply. I can't talk about one entity here. As the position that I hold here with the town, I can't talk one entity. I have to talk about the whole pie. So everybody needs to know that there's more to this than what is being said. There's your half and there's the other half which goes up.
That's correct. And that's correct.
So people have to know this because a lot of people in this town and us being at the Board, because we all worry about it, we have people in this town with fixed incomes. They don't have the luxury of keep on going up and up because they only get so much money to play with.
It's going to go up or not, but your point is that we can't have them thinking it's not going to go up.
That's my point.
That's right. I think that you're absolutely right. This little thing that the town can do is, you know, as we've said, only affects a piece of the bill. We wish we could affect the whole thing, but unfortunately.
No, I understand that, but I just wanted to say that out loud so people understand that you're here for one part of it.
For that one part.
But it's a substantial part of it.
I understand that, but that other half, it still hurts the taxpayers.
The service side.
That's correct.
In the communications that we send home, we try to be as plain and vanilla about that as possible. You know, our letter is looked over carefully by the State's Consumer Division so that it's not, you know, we haven't glossed anything over. All right, and I wish I could say it's an exciting piece of marketing, the mail, but it's dry as dust.
And it will go to every meter. It'll go to every home explaining what this is all about, what the rate is going to be, you know, the length of it and so forth.
So what you're basically going to say to the consumer is your package is X amount of dollars. This is, if you go National Grid and stay with this, this is where you're going to be. If you go with us, we cut some of this off and this is our rate and this is your saving.
Correct.
Basically.
Basically correct.
Which the supply last, last year, the supply end increase was the biggest impact of our bill.
Your supply portion's about two-thirds of your bill, about a third is your delivery.
Right, and the other part of it is the more people in Millville that jump on this wagon, the better rate you get?
Not necessarily, but it helps. I mean, historically, opt-out rates have been about 3% in our other client communities. There's some people that just want no part of any change and that's okay. There's some people who think by sending the card back, they're actually joining and as hard as we express that this is an opt-out program, some people are still confused. And some people, I say, you know, it's a government program, no thanks. And that's okay too. You know, I mean, we want to preserve people's rights and they can get out anytime, if they're not locked into anything. This is meant to be, you know, a win-win for the consumer. If it's good, they can take it. If they don't like it and want to do something else, they certainly can. And I, you know, one of the things that, you know, you asked earlier about, you know, the vig and stuff like that, it's a good question. When retained by the town, we work for you. And I can't stress that enough that, you know, it's not, we're not, you know, this big utility company that's just going to pass on rates and stomp all over the little guy. We take our responsibility to the town, to the Board and to the people who live there very seriously and we're your advocate, we're your agent. We do what you want us to do. If you say, "Brian, go out and get me a price that looks like X and has lasted for this long," we do our best to do that. You know, I don't come back and say, "Well, here's the best I could do, take it." You know, if you don't like it for any reason, you say, "No, thanks."
Is there an average percent, savings percent you could share safely?
You know, every town, very ser, it depends on when we've gone out. Like we've been doing this for, you know, just about 10 years and 10 years ago, prices, we were lucky if we could get between 10 and 11 cent power. Then after the financial crisis, we were seeing rates in the 6 and 7 cent range. And then last winter, we, you know, we all know what happened and we were saving people money, but we were still bringing them rates of about 13 cents. And just recently, the market has sold off tremendously. National Grid still giving you 13 cents because of their historical purchasing, but if you're fresh in the market, just last week with Leo, we were in Holliston, their rate is
8.7.
8.7 cents, which is a substantial markdown from the utility and it's 100% green. So you see this, the market is crazy. And what we want to do for you is give you some stability. You know, you mentioned people on a fixed income. While we can't control the delivery side of what National Grid's going to do, if we can, yeah.
I was just saying that so they don't have, get the wrong picture.
But if we can give them some stability on the supply side, I think that would go a long way for people's peace of mind if they're on a fixed income.
And to get back to your point, the market is extremely volatile. The best way that we can deliver that 8 cents is basically due to the market fluctuations. Right now, the market is down. So we were able last week to do that 8.7 cents and lock it in for at least a year and we're going to try to go beyond that to keep that, because we know down the road, the market is going to even go higher. You know, the utility rates are going to, because we're under such stress with the infrastructure that there is nothing on the horizon that says that the rates are going to continue this freefall.
I do want to acknowledge that I did not answer your question directly though, okay?
I did, I got it, I got you. Okay, with a very broad brush, yeah.
My question is, to make it profitable yourselves, do you have any idea of what you need to supply to the town of Millville in terms of kilowatt hours?
Yeah, you know, we know, we serve any town of any size that wants this, we will do it. And I'll be frank, a town as small as Millville will be a loss leader for us, at least for the first couple of years. But that's okay. We believe in this statewide and we want to serve, and we serve Haverhill and Lowell and we make money there. We serve Lanesboro and Lancaster and hopefully Millville. We don't make money on them, but that's okay. Collectively, you know, we do just fine, but you know, so there's no magic number about the number of customers it takes. It's about having, you know, continuing the proud tradition of local government here in New England and especially in Massachusetts where we pride ourselves on open town meeting and things like that. We want the power to be here in this room rather than with the utility and, you know, we'll take, we take charge of the same fee to the customer no matter how big or how small the town is.
I think what you were going at was the size of the town and the number of kilowatt hours. If we were fortunate enough to get the okay to go ahead, we go to Grid and they give us the exact load of every meter in town. So we will know exactly the historical usage for every meter. And then that's what we build our RFP on. When we go out to get quotes from the suppliers, we have an exact idea of what the load is in this town. And that's where we get the quotes on.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I'm glad I heard that because I was curious, I was going to approach National Grid myself because we're a green community and I just wanted to again understand what those total loads were.
Are you a green citizen, a green town community? You are. Okay, all the more, glad you brought that up. We went and it was not even on Holliston's radar. They didn't care about green when we went in there, but we started talking about the advantages of it. They were in the process of getting to the green, so they've been working towards it. We can go, we can put you into a 100% green product. And in their case, it was, it was exactly a mill more expensive to do that, which is next to nothing. It translated to like 70, 50, $70 a year per meter to go 100% green. And they elected to do that because it helped their whole picture on the green side. And I'll ask here, you, obviously you are interested in green. So that is part of our RFP, that's part of the criteria we ask for pricing on and we will include green to come back. So when we do come back with pricing, we'll show you what we call the brown rate, which is the grid rate. And then we'll also show you, it's going to be slightly more expensive, but what the green would cost. And then you can make that call yourselves.
And then get us points with D O E R.
Yes, it will.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does, yeah.
And there's some in-betweens too, that you could, you could say, well, maybe 50% or 20%, or 20%. So you can kind of, you know, you can weigh it towards the customer, more towards the customer benefit, but still have the benefit for the town participating in the green.
But the incremental rate today, because the market is falling, the incremental rate between the brown and the green is infinitesimal. It's really not worth it. It really just worth to go with the green.
And you can choose what shade of green you like too. Do you want wind? Do you want hydro? Do you want solar? Do you want a mix?
Green is green.
So it really opens up the palette of colors to the town and its leaders when they want to chart the issue.
If you were Cambridge, all they want is brand-new green that doesn't exist today. They want to be able to say that they have the addition. So they came in and their load, you know, that's really expensive. You don't need to do that. I mean, you can just go with the Rex and have 100% green product.
Sure.
And that's something very, very tangible to be able to tell the constituencies, "We bought you 100% green, substantially less than what Grid is going to charge you and it's green."
So, so do we have to take this town meeting or do we vote upon this?
It's already been done. The town meeting.
Well, I know, but I thought that was with somebody else.
No, 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 but the town voted, I'm sorry.
It was with someone else, but the whole concept was.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we took a look at your town meeting language and it's sufficiently flexible that it allows you to go to do this independently as just the town of Millville rather than in conjunction with these other communities through Hampshire Council. So it was carefully written and correctly written to give you that flexibility.
And anybody can opt out at any time.
That's great.
No pressure.
With no penalty or?
No penalty at any phase of anything.
And a resident can opt back in. Let's say a few months later they go, "Ah, you know, you made a mistake. That was dumb." Call the phone, you know, call us up, we put you back in the program, no problem.
Okay.
One thing I'll offer is a timeframe. I know you folks have been waiting a long time for this day to show up.
Yeah, yeah.
And the DPU, well, they've changed dramatically during the course of your wait period, but just hypothetically, I can paint a broad brush for you of what to expect. If we were to get the approval to move ahead now, we would have to submit an updated petition to the State. They have accelerated, so we would hope to be able to get an approval from the DPU within two to three months. And then from that, which would take us to maybe January, February, we could then go out and start the RFP process and have you up and running by second quarter of next year if everything went according to the plans that we have.
Right. Yeah, I think that's a, that's a very accurate timeline of where you could be.
Let me understand this, going to town meeting just to get this thing changed?
No, no, you've already done that.
Yeah.
All you need is approval for us to proceed ahead with you, that's all you need.
Two, three months. Go live and everything.
I'd be the first thing we'd have to do.
What's that?
Our lawyer would have to take a look. I wouldn't do anything without, at least that's only my, I don't have the rest of the board too, but I would definitely.
Do you use, so what, did you use a firm that also, because if they, if you use a firm that works with any of our other client communities, at least we can sort of connect the two attorneys within that firm so they say, "Oh yeah, I did this for Sutton, I know it." that's something like that. I, I don't, I don't know, but if you use a, you know, Copland and Page or one of those law firms-
Move on, Patrini.
Okay. If you work with anybody.
Brian's trying to say that they're not familiar with the program. Just gonna drag it out, and obviously it costs more money for you guys on your side. So if we had, if there's only an energy lawyer looking at these things for the towns, you might wanna, you know, no disrespect to the lawyer that you use, but he, he would probably understand also that, you know, an energy lawyer should look at this, instead of just your typical lawyer.
Didn't you have somebody look at the last one?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, town council did.
All right, so the lawyers, I, top of my list, John, lawyers was mine.
Correct.
Um, so, so I'm hearing some of the communities within your conversation, but approximately how many communities do you service? I hear Holliston, I hear Sutton, I hear, you know, how many communities do you have?
Uh, there are-
I won't hold you.
Twenty communities with active power supply agreements. The juice is flowing. There are another four or five at various stages with the state, and another four or five at various stages at the local level.
Um, so, I have the number of residents, doesn't matter. Um, hearing through conversation, you've got as low as eight point seven, but in some areas as high as thirteen, but always lower than, always lower than national grid.
It depends on the term you select, yes, as we indicated earlier, National Grid's rates go usually lately. Sky-high in the winter, they moderate in the summer, sky-high in the winter, moderate in the summer. And a lot of our client communities of their own volition are saying, colonial, go get us a one-year fixed price that takes, soothes this stuff out. And what winds up happening for some communities, they save a bundle of money in the wintertime, when it's really important that they do so, especially people with electric heat.
Right.
In the summertime, the rates are a little higher than National Grid's. But at the end, what you wanna do is look back, all right, how'd we do over the course of the year? Did we save people money? And inevitably, the answer is yes, because historically, consumption is a little lower in the summertime. So what you gain in the winter, you don't give back in the summertime. So you net, you net out better than, than you would have had you stuck with National Grid.
Okay. Um, I'm hearing, I, I heard the opt-out, opt-back-in.
Mm-hmm.
But if they get the card, they don't send it back as an opt-out, they are now part of, they will be changed.
Yes.
So if someone doesn't want to be part of it, but didn't send it back, they will automatically be enrolled.
Correct.
So it'll be important on our part to, to inform.
They can opt out at any time, number one.
Right.
So we have a whole range of communication, education pieces. Every meter will get an opt-out letter, with a card in the letter. We will set up a hotline, it'll be a Millville aggregation hotline with a dedicated eight-hundred number to answer any questions from the constituents. We will set up a website, there'll be a Millville website, that will have all of this information on it, all of FAQs, and the opt-out. And then we will put together press kits also, to notify the local papers, Metro West and all of those types of papers, about what's going on in Millville, what the, what the rate is gonna be here, and all related information. So you've got those four different types of media that will be addressed specifically to the constituents with all this information. And all opt-out, every one of them will have an opt-out.
And I would only add for this board, that if, if we do go that route, then that we get them onto our websites as links.
It would be linked, we would link that, yes, we do that anyway, right, it's a link.
All right, um, timeframe process, I think that was all my questions.
Okay.
Good, good.
The process with D P, DPU.
Yeah. Uh, the process, thank you for reminding me that. Um, you know, as, as Leo alluded to, thankfully, over the course of the last several years, the DPU is, it used to take, in Lowell, it took a year to get this done, just at the state level, never mind the lo-, the local stuff. And now, uh, is, you know, recently, we moved the town of Auburn through, you know, we were there in June, and we were out in September. And that's over the summer, when nobody at the state's working that hard, so we were pretty proud of that. So I think that what they're seeing is, all right, it's, these things are, they're kind of cookie cutter at that level now. They all look the same, I mean, they want, they want your plan to look just like this, and I want your lawyer to look at it. But when he says, well, can we change this and change that, say, this is what the state wants to see. We've perfected this for a reason. This makes the state people feel very comfortable and warm and fuzzy when they say, go for it, Millville. So we got the documents, and that's why I sort of dumped them on Helen, they wanted, this is exactly what the state likes, they're very comfortable with this, and they will get you out sooner, so that you can get into the marketplace. So, as Leo said, I think if we, if we move forward with all due haste, we can have you comparing rates next spring with National Grid.
Great. Excellent.
All right.
So we, we meet again November sixteenth.
And if you are, at that time, if you're prepared to, to move on some, on at least the consulting agreement, and, and this plan, which needs to be, you know, hung, so, you know, somewhere, you know, so to speak, posted officially, maybe put on your website for citizens to download and read through. And the more people that get a chance to put their eyeballs on it, the better. Especially in advance of, of a piece of mailing that might come out later next year. Uh, so those are the things that, uh-
And the more this DPU looks and likes seeing that. They'd love to see everything decimated to the constituents as much as possible. So the sooner you can get that rolling, the better.
Yeah, they will ask, was this plan made available for public review? And whatever process you use internally for doing so, we just need to bring proof of that with us when we go to Boston for you. Okay. All right, so I'll work with you on all that stuff.
Okay.
All right.
So our process right now is, are lawyers going to look at this, and we are going to take action on our next meeting?
Yep.
If she hasn't answered for us.
She will.
She's good.
They bill by the hour, they do.
Yeah.
They find the time, right?
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Next, we have, um, our first public forum. Correspondents.
Um, planning board just submitted a letter and asked if the chair would consider addressing it this evening.
Yep. Kinda know what, what it's all about. The purpose of this letter, um, again, we can't, we can talk about it, we just can't make any decisions about this particular, because it's not on the agenda, but. So the purpose of this letter is to notify the Board of Selectmen of the planning board's disapproval of the removal of the two articles submitted in the two thousand fifteen fall special town meeting. On October seventh, three members of the Board of Selectmen, along with the members, uh, three members of the Finance Committee, reviewed the final warrant. At that meeting, two articles submitted by the planning board were removed. One submitted pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's, excuse me, Chapter forty A, Section five, and the second was for acceptance of a subdivision road pursuant to Section five A twenty, subpart twenty, of the Town of Millville subdivision rules and regulations. Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section five, establishes the process for adoption of zoning amendments by the town meeting, including the requirement to hold public hearings to solicit input from the public and any town boards or committees. That may be interested in the, in the proposed zoning change. Likewise, the subdivision rules and regulations, in effect, at the time of, of definitive subdivision approval for Carriage Estates one, detailed and processed for acceptance of roads. The Board of Selectmen states, on its approved meetings minutes for the October seventh, two thousand fifteen meeting, that the zoning article was not placed on the warrant, because additional clarification was needed by the planning board. The planning board objects to this action for numerous reasons. First, planning board staff was in town hall the evening of October seventh, two thousand fifteen, and neither the town planner nor the planning assistant was contacted to provide clarification. Second, the public hearing notice was posted by the town clerk on September twenty-ninth, allowing an opportunity for, for residents and selectman members to ask questions and raise concerns with proposed zoning changes. Third, Mass General Law establishes a clear process for adoption of zoning articles, and establishes the authority of the planning board in the adoption of the zoning amendments. And lastly, the decision is not, to not place the article on the warrant was made by two out of five selectman members. The subdivision rules and regulations, in effect, with Carriage one Estates, I, I was approved, Carriage one Estates was approved by the planning board, does not include a process of approval of the highway surveyor. The purpose, the purpose of the public hearing is to solicit comments from residents and town officials, such as highway surveyor, to state their support or lack of support for acceptance of a road under the supervision, subdivision rules and regulations. It is the planning board's opinion that the members present at the Board of Selectmen's October seventh meeting ignored the planning board's authority under Mass General Law and the subdivision rules and regulations. The Board of Selectmen also interfered in the public hearing process that would have provided a forum to discuss both articles and allow, and allowed for revisions or withdrawals if deemed necessary. The planning board has actively sought to address concerns of the community as it rel-, as it relates to increasing revenue, or relieve some of the financial burden residents have felt over the years. Actions taken by the Board of Selectmen on October seventh interfere with the ability of the planning board to encourage economic development opportunities, and the ability of the board to promote the welfare of residents. This letter voicing the planning board's disapproval of the actions taken on October seventh will hopefully result in renewed respect for the authority of the planning board to bring forward articles for replacement on a town meeting warrant, to hold public hearings, and to bring forward proposals for action by the town meeting. Um, I'm gonna have to say that I, I do agree with a lot of this letter. Um, I don't think it, any article of that type is really up to the Board of Selectmen to strike from the warrant, um, other than at town meeting. Because it's all, all, the planning board brings it forward, we'll just talk about a road in particular, and, and my understanding on how it's supposed to work, and the way our government is, is, um, the people are the, are the ruling, uh, management. We, we only bring ideas, uh, we help keep everything managed, um, to, to, uh, but it's really up to the taxpayers to make a decision whether or not, with, with all the evidence provided by the builders, the planning board, and anyone else involved with a particular warrant, it's their decision whether a road should be accepted or stricken from the warrant, not this board. This board is only here as a management team. And, um, unfortunately, I wasn't at that meeting to, to voice my opinion that I'm speaking now, but, so it's kind of an unfortunate thing. By approving that road, so long as all this, it was safe to, to pass on foot, on vehicle, whether it was motorized or self-powered vehicles, um, and as long as it was properly built by the DOT requirement, I think we've, um, what, we're gonna, we lose revenue from Chapter ninety by not having, by having another road that's still not accepted. And we need every penny we, we can for our, um, street sidewalks from Chapter ninety, so. I, I think going forward, if we think about, um, this particular incident, and remember that, that we, though we do have the authority to strike a warrant, I, I do believe that, um, we should remember that the taxpayers are really the, the deciding authority.
If you're saying, oh, and we have the authority to strike a warrant, right?
Yep, yep.
We strike a warrant.
Yeah, but this particular warrant, I mean, this particular article in the warrant-
Yep.
-had a hearing coming up, that we should have let the hearing happen. And then at that point, at that meet, wait a minute, at that meeting, we can make the decision, say, all right, on the town meeting floor, we're gonna strike Article twenty, whatever one, whatever one.
Well, how about if we don't wanna bring it front of town, we wanna strike it now, because we don't feel comfortable about it?
If the planning board says that everything is done by the bylaws of the town and by the Commonwealth on the road, we're just using a road as an example, um, because that's in, is particularly what, what was in question.
Well, here's another thing, the statement was made, and you read on there, that when we did this, they were upstairs. They knew we were going over this that night. Why didn't somebody come down here and sit at the meeting?
Nobody had questions for them, so they- They continued with their own meeting that they had, already agendas on.
They came down here, but they know we were going through everything.
Right, but when, before we struck that, knowing they were up in their meeting-
I didn't know they were up there.
Well, it's posted, so that, we can't use that as an excuse, we can't.
Whatever.
It doesn't hold up, you know.
No, Mr. Chairman, that was, um, a Wednesday evening, and I did advise the board members present that the town planner was upstairs, and I specifically asked-
I think that's in the minutes.
They would like me to, to call him down, and I was told no.
I, I think I read that in the minutes, so, I agree with you, Helen. So, I, and there's nothing we can do, it's, it's past, it's done. And it's unfortunate that, you know, now we got another six months to wait to get an approval on a road, to, to, you know, get some Chapter ninety funding for. But all the, all the evidence and, and documents, and any other information that we would've, that we needed to obtain before striking that, um, was gonna be available at the hearing that was scheduled within a week of that meeting. And, that's all, we, so in, you know, I, in respect for the planning board, I, going forward, we, you know, bef-, before we strike, and, and if we're not a hundred percent sure, should we strike, or should we not strike, we can always strike on the town meeting floor. We could, the selectman or a finding, whoever, can always vote to strike an article right then and there. And then it gets voted on by town, by the town meeting. But you always have the opportunity to not even discuss an article, you can strike it on town meeting floor, or, or just let it roll and discuss it and vote on it. But I think by doing what, what we did, is, you know, not giving the taxpayer, the people that put us here, the opportunity to make that decision, you know. And, and you have to give the planning board the benefit of the doubt, they had everything that, as far as they, they know, they, they were gonna be able to answer any question that came up, and they had all the right information to say, this road shall, should be approved, because, and whatever questions asked, they would've had the answers. Knowing, you know, and then Helen, and Helen, and in the minutes, and you guys approved the minutes, Helen did caution on, on that, and, and did advise that there was a person available, and that there was a hearing scheduled, so. With, with that being told, told to us, we probably shouldn't have stricken it. That's all. That's, I can't say anything more than that.
I think we also have to remember that we're in our meeting, and we need to make decisions based on the information that's in front of us. And it's not to say that they don't have some very valid points in there, but in the meeting, in, in our timeframe, of when we put our article warrants out, when they're submitted, when they're to be signed, our timeframe is very well planned out to finalize when we're going to sign and post that, that item. So, I mean, could there been, could there have been better communication, maybe? But there have been some years that we get that article, and that public hearing has already been held, and there are no questions, they'll say it has been held, and blah, blah, blah. As far as Chapter ninety funding, we really shouldn't be concerned about that loop. We should be concerned about the multiple roads within town that are not registered, that have been, that should've been registered years or decades ago. So I think, you know, to say that that one little loop is gonna cost us Chapter ninety, is kind of blowing it out of- is kind of blowing it out of proportion when we have miles of road not on file.
Agreed, that's agreed. But, um, it's still another, I don't know, three quarters or a mile, a mile, whatever it is, it's not very long, but, um, it's, the facts are, whether the hearing was before or after that, me, knowing there was a hearing coming, we shouldn't have taken it upon ourselves to say, no, stop the hearing and strike the article.
Go back a month and try to figure out my thought process or John's thought process or, or, or anyone sitting at the table that evening.
Helen warned the individuals present that there was a hearing scheduled.
And we voted based on the information and the discussion that we had at that evening.
And then, and.
And you know what?
We've done it before, I've, in the fourteen roughly, uh, town meetings, especially any annual town meetings that I've sat in, um, as a selectman, we have stricken articles on the floor because we waited that long because of hearings after our approval of the warrants. And so we were kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, so you gotta spin the wheel and, and let it go on, on the town meeting floor and hope for the best. I mean, the people that elect us are the boss, we work for them, they don't work for us.
You know what, like I said, I can't go back a month ago and know my thought process at the time. But at the time, I don't, I don't think anyone here takes their vote lightly. I think we've put a great deal of thought into them and sometimes it's hard to make decisions, but that's the decision we made. I appreciate the feedback that the planning board has given us to use it going forward, but, I mean, like you said, what's been done is done.
I don't have time, I don't have time. Okay, that's fine. So anyway, we can't really do too much more on it. It's, it's not on the agenda.
It's a lesson.
Yep, lessons learned, as they say. That's all. Appointment to resignations, we have a appointment for council on aging. And, oops, on file. The Millville Council on Aging submits for your approval the name of Michelle Dumont of Fifty Ton Iron, of Fifty Two Ironstone Street, who would fill out our alternate council member position. The COA met with Mrs. Dumont at our October fourteenth meeting. She has volunteered at the senior center for one year. Sincerely, Judy Monroe. Judy, would you like to speak on, or, you don't have to, I mean, if, um, you, if, if the board is, uh, you know, happy to have Mrs. Dumont.
We're very happy to have Mrs. Dumont, or any of you also. We would very much appreciate you appointing her to that post, she'll be a ver- an asset to the, to the group.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion? This term goes through.
June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Alright, great, so is there a second? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and thank you very much to Michelle Dumont. And to the whole, and to the whole council on aging, thank you so much for, for all you do. Ellen, executive secretary.
Yep, um, just a quick update, I just wanted to let the board know the status of the, um, the newly hired town accountant. I spoke with him this morning, um, the plan is, um, his official start date will be next Monday, the ninth. He will attend the town meeting up at the elementary school in the evening, and then the remainder of the workdays of next week, he'll be working with the town accountant training at her home. So his first day in the town hall will be the following Monday on the sixteenth. So everything's in progress and.
I have one question.
Sure.
The proposal that the board presented him with going to get his certification and that, what was his conversation?
That was in the offer letter, and he is going to be delivering the signed acceptance to me Monday evening at the town meeting. He asked, um, if he could speak with the board at that time about the certification. I don't think he's, I think he's willing to do it, but I don't think he's thrilled about it. The understanding I'm getting from him, from our conversation, is that he feels it would be a waste of money to the town, quite frankly, because of his experience, um, he doesn't feel it's really a necessity.
Well, because of our conversation with a certain person, we are good for the town that he has that piece of paper.
So that's certainly up to the board. So he, as I mentioned, he did.
I don't know if I, I'm allowed to say anymore because it was an executive session.
No, that's a public.
It was open meeting, but we were, it was a workshop, we were off camera, but it was open meeting.
So Marilyn made the statement that she strongly suggests that he get it because it's better for the town. That's why I mentioned after the rest of the board that we put it in there, um, because, you know, Marilyn holds, I mean, a few years she did it, she knows. So moving forward, that's why I presented it, I told the board, the board agreed. So, I, I'll have the board agree now. How much time is involved in certification?
I'm not quite sure, to be honest with you, um, I know it's, I think, a full day of testing. I'm not sure if there are requirements prior to testing. And I know there is a B involved because he did, he did mention today that it would be, you know, a waste of funding for the town.
Well, he may think it's a waste of funding, I mean, I don't think the rest of the board feels it's a waste, um.
So that's something, you know, he certainly, um, wants to speak with you about. Um, the board gave him up to one year from date of hire to fulfill that obligation, so it's something the board could work with him on.
One person says he should have, another person says it's really not worth it. It's almost like it's a matter of opinion, cause the D O R doesn't require it.
Right.
So it's an opinion, opinionated type thing.
How much is he schooling?
I don't know, I can certainly find out. What he said to me today was, um, was that he would totally support and understand that if he didn't have prior years' experience as a town accountant or if he didn't have a degree sufficient for the position, but he feels as though he's got the credentials and he's got the experience and this extra certification really isn't necessary. I think he, what he is, I think what he's asking is that the board allow him to prove himself before mandating he attend, um, the training and take the class.
I think, you know, with his years of experience and of his, um, you know, I'm trying to, he's near the end of his career, you know, he's not a twenty, thirty-year-old accountant for government. I think what he was saying, even in Marilyn's conversation, you know, he's taken, basically taken all the classes, just hasn't sat down for the test. So I, I think it comes to us as, you know, what do we do? I'm with you, John, I, you know, I like it, I like the certification, I like knowing that there's a, a level there, but I can understand the gentleman's point of view saying, I've, I've done this for years, I've essentially, you know, I can, he probably thinks I can sit down and take the test and not have a problem because he's done it for so long. It's just, he hasn't been asked to, and so therefore, you know, he might meet the criteria of being one, but he just hasn't taken that test, and that was in the phone conversation too with Marilyn. I'd like to, you know, considering that with Marilyn the week of the ninth, I'd like to get some feedback from her at the end of that week, of that training, and to, to hear, what does Marilyn think?
Well, we could always modify and say, okay, work three year, alright, we have an outstanding, and then come back if the board and the executive secretary don't feel comfortable and want him to get it, then we could then have him, you know, I mean.
My initial thought was to peel him out at the, at the next, at the meeting, my next meeting, and then maybe evaluate the situation at six months.
Yep.
That's what I'm saying, we could modify it.
You know, we've all talked about the longevity, I mean, we're not, Marilyn was here for thirty years. You know, this gentleman, I don't foresee being here for thirty years, so I think, you know, I can go either way, I can go either way, but I'd like to hear Marilyn's thought after the week of training. Because I think when you get the two towns sitting down, you're gonna, yeah, you're gonna tell which way the wind is blowing.
She's probably driving further than.
So we'll decide after, uh, after, probably our first December meeting, we will all talk to her by then, and then.
And that was really it, yes, I don't have anything else.
So we have, uh, old business, we have the oath of office compliance.
Yes, and the assistant town clerk did inform me today that we are one hundred percent in compliance, so everybody did come in and, and take the oaths, that was, that was needed.
Now the community compact agreement, now, Coop, uh, I was gonna say Coop, it's gonna, cause Officer Coop, no. Steve Fernal said he could handle that without needing funds.
He is meeting with the representative, um, next, this Friday, so I really won't have any more information until probably next week.
Okay.
But I didn't know if the board had maybe a second choice, so that if Steve does come back to me next Monday and say, yep, it's a go, you know, I would have a second thing, I can go ahead and apply.
I was wondering if we could convince Mr. Povello to sit in on that, because that's his job with military. So he's, he's up on that, and if he can be, you know, if he'd be good enough to give his.
On the Coop thing, you mean?
On the Coop.
Yeah, yeah, if he's willing, so.
I did go online and, um, researched the community compact agreement. Most of it was news articles through various newspapers and what other communities have, um, applied for. As of October fifteenth, I think the forty, thirty, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-first, there was like a three-town Berkshire, they all signed on. So as of October fifteenth, there was like forty-one communities who have officially signed on. You know, with three hundred and what, sixteen, eighteen?
Two fifty.
So, um, you know, I think sooner than, than later. Some of the things were the green energies, some of them were focused around, um, education. There was one that was using, uh, was it called Complete, I think they named it themselves, Complete Street. And what they were doing is looking at their roads and the study of their road and the infrastructure of the road. Another community was putting all their permitting and processing online. I thought that might be a nice process, you know, all of our forms, instead of printing out your form at home, kind of submitting it and being able to maybe online do some of your, whether it's your building, streamlining that portion of it, or just making, you know, we're, I know a lot of people do come down and pay. We do our payments online, but maybe, I don't know, looking at or just something that was there. Building department or any town clerk fees, dog licenses, everything could be done online, paid online, processed online, um, working with the I T people to, uh, to do that. What was another one? One was really just like the, um, capital planning and the, the outlook of it. One thing I thought about for our communities, we've got the bike path coming through. Some of it was to promote social economic development, you know, should we be looking at signage? To poke them down to the store, to point them, um, to the, you know, other things that we don't have much, but, you know, the community house or the this. So when they're coming across Main Street, uh, I'm sorry, Central Street, they, there may be some signs for, not just the lot, but, you know, historic downtown areas.
Yep.
Do we, do we look at something like that to promote, you know, we're opening up our business center.
Yep.
You know, do we put in for something of that sort for signage to promote? I don't know, those are just some things in reading the news articles, um, and what some of the towns were looking at, what I thought, how could they apply to our, a lot of them were the green energy committee, but we, we're already on board with that, so we didn't need it. But those were some of the things that crossed my mind, I was reading to see what other communities were doing. Those were just some things that stood out to me.
The Complete Streets program, the new program.
Yeah.
Because it includes sidewalks and the like.
Mm-hmm.
That's probably not bad, I, I mean, I've seen, you go to some small towns, corrupt, they, you see, the sign, like you say, you get to a major intersection and there'll be all a bunch of little, you know, market this way, deli that way, and whatever. So people passing through say, oh, look at, I can go get lunch right over here.
What are they projecting, ten thousand on the bike path, anyone?
Something like that, I was wondering.
More than that.
More than that?
Yes, it could be annually a hun- up to a hundred thousand.
Okay, maybe I just missed the magic there.
Well, maybe, yeah, yeah, it was a lot.
You know, um.
Most likely more through the summer.
You know, with that, like.
The snowshoes, they said, our snowshoeing is big on it.
Mm-hmm.
So it's gonna be.
You know, where we zoned our, our Central Street and Main Street area, you know, I don't know, do we promote that? Do we put that out there as, you know, signage?
You know, we have six thousand cars a day of vehicles going up and down Central Street, per day.
Right. Those were just some things, and I think there was one town that they put in three, they put in like a plan, but it, it wasn't one thing. They got approved for three small projects. So I don't, I don't know if we have to, you know, streamline it to one, but the, the article I was reading had, they had three things that were approved.
You need fifty.
Oh, yeah. But those were just some things that stood out to me as possibilities.
That's a step in the right direction to help.
You know, cause once you get it, you, you, you only have two years to complete it, too. You know, and, and every article kept saying, you know, they're getting points for their grants, cause one was, one did the, the, uh, the Complete Street, and then they were applying for the state, what was the name of the grant, was another grant for state for, wasn't chapter ninety, it was totally different, but it was for the development of roads and this and that. And so they were applying to that and they were saying it was a direct correlation cause now they want the state grant for that project, so, um, I just think the sooner the better.
Let me volunteer this at this time, I was gonna bring it up a little bit later. But, uh, I mentioned Mr. Helen, that tomorrow at one thirty, I'm gonna be meeting with Matt Schutzley on SOL, SOL Select. He's gonna be making a proposal for a portion of one eighty-one Main Street for solar. But when he was here, he talked about a, a combination type of project with developing that area with commercial development with, he's still with a common, uh, you know, solar and commercial. And I dug up that C M R P C claim that we had, we're back, and, you know, all that ended that was, was just a part before, you know, in that plan, and the commercial stuff was down this end.
Right.
So, when I look at that facility, I'm looking at access and, you know, can we get some help in planning and combining all that stuff? So, but bottom line here is I'm gonna appear up, uh, Matt Schutzley tomorrow and at the next board meeting, if we could put that on the agenda, if, if it could agree, if, if it makes sense, did he come make a presentation to the board?
Mm, yep. And a train station.
And train it all, yep.
And that'll keep the, the propane people out.
You know what, I mean, we keep going back to one eighty-one, what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do? I mean, is that. But I'm just saying, maybe that's our, maybe that's our compact. If we can't get this building in and we have a piece there that, you know, we've had the train station, we've had the walkthrough of the, the, um, Providence Worcester, the solar with the C M R, uh, C M R key, you know, I, I don't know, is that something that we look at? Putting the compact in for feasibility and use of that? And, and so that it becomes a profit, profitable thing for this community, I mean, we've had that plan for quite a few years now. Um, probably about almost, I'm trying to, I don't know.
That probably would be a good compact, like two weeks, one eighty-one main. Yeah, so- And even, well, you said that some communities did do more than one, uh, compact thing, so.
Yeah, that one town, yes.
We'll go for a coop, go for that, whatever else that would have some point for.
I just imagine that the, the coop plan is something that M E M A on the state level is doing probably anyways with its communities, and I just, not that it's not important, I, I, don't, don't get me wrong, I know it's important, I just think there's resources for that without, you know, turning up this much.
If we could do it for minimum cost, then why waste the, the community compact on that, and we could put it-
Yeah, because-
And I'll, and that's a great idea, I mean, I may to step in the direction of, of revenue.
Yeah.
And one of the first things we gotta do is get, uh, P and W to get, get us an access, or pay for that access and into that property, so they can be-
Well, either them or whoever is our partner in development. If they see, if they see enough dollar signs, they definitely, those people will do some jump-
Yeah, well, yeah, the great swing, all that area there.
Yep, if they see, if they see revenue on a piece of property, they'll, they'll spend money to, to make it later, so.
And you can make that a real nice area, and try to get the river, the river runs good, and, and the, uh, the trees and, and the park like you're saying, they can make that look real nice. Put a bicycle shop down there.
That can't grow.
Yeah, it can.
Well, we got, it's, it's beautiful in there once it's cleaned up.
Spent my childhood running, well, not up here, but further down the field now.
Yeah.
I mean, standing on the riverbank down there, so.
Anyway, alright.
So what's the next step?
We look for, we look for a category that would cover that type of, you know, something for one eighty-one main, if we're not gonna use the coop, uh, category.
Do you want a motion? I make a motion for the community compact agreement to be looked into, um, what, I'm trying to think of the word, um, to encompass one eighty-one Main Street for future development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know exactly what that will entail and what it will look like, but we'll see what can fall under that review and-
New business is two thousand sixteen B O S meeting dates.
I would just need a motion to approve this, um, I think I had mentioned to you in an email. Um, I just wanted to point out that in July, I've only included one, um, meeting date. History of the past few years, I think we've gotten through, uh, gotten by with just one. And the week of July fourth, um, would be your first meeting, that's usually a bad week for people.
Yeah.
So, um, I bumped it to the second, I was gonna do the second and fourth, um, but the August meeting is very early, it's the first of August, so I don't know that we'd need them so close.
Right, right.
Look it up, if, I mean, something-
If something comes up, yeah, the board's always amenable to scheduling something, so, for now, um, I left it at that, and the rest of, the, the rest of the dates are as they normally are.
Motion to accept two thousand sixteen meeting dates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we have.
Yeah, and this only requires the signature of the chair, so I would just need a motion from the board to authorize the chair, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, can I, if anyone agrees, could I go back to correspondent? I, I missed one thing. So, I gotta, if everyone is cool with that, and then we're gonna go to the-
I don't know, is it good?
Huh?
Is it good?
Not really.
No, I don't wanna go back.
So everyone knows thirty-one Hill Street. Okay, so I have, I did get a email from another, from a resident on Hill Street, um, complaining. Um, all, all the same, which, you know, it's like Fred Sanford, it sounds like, according to the email. Yes.
Have, have you driven by it?
Have you seen it?
So, very quickly, but in the morning it's dark and at night it's been dark coming home, but I, I've seen it, uh-
I drove by on, on an afternoon, the woman was out there as I was steering at her yard, but I had to look, so.
But, you know what, so as I'm saying, I bent by in the dark and it looks not good. So daytime, I'm sure it's not much better, so anyway. Yeah, so, and, um, not, I mean, Sanford and Son was a great TV show, just so, you know, I didn't like it. But, uh, I just, I just would like that resident to know that we, I did receive the email, I forwarded it to Helen, so she can forward it to everyone, um, and then, uh, you know, we can all see, and, you know, and we are working on it with the building inspector, um, he's well aware, who's also the zoning enforcement officer, and he is well aware of the, um, of the situation, and he's, unfortunately, things take time because of the mass general laws and all the different things that you have to do before you can do something, and, um, so it's, it's unfortunate that things take time, but we are working on it, and, and I know you have frustration about some other properties in town that, that you feel, uh, we had similar situations and we just let it go by, but, um, that, you're cor- that is correct, we do have other properties in town that have similar complaints, and we're not, we haven't let it go by the wayside, it's just, once you have to get lawyers involved with these type of situations, things take time, and, and it's, it's the unfortunate, um, beast of the whole, uh, process, but it, we have to follow the process by the law, so.
So, but going forward, this, the solution is to get it, get those types of things early?
Which this one, we were able to hop on pretty quick, um, so, and a couple of the other things, you know, uh, the loss of John Emery, he was working on some of them, and then we lost him, and then we were in between building inspectors, so, and it's, you know, nobody's fault. I mean, it was unfortunate that, that the gentleman passed away, and then we had to get the new people involved and, um, acclimated with the situations and all, and, so, but this new inspector is, um, on, he's on it, and he's, you know, working to, um, make it right, so, and that's it. So now, uh, we can go to the selectmen's, selectman members forum, and Mr. Reposa has the energy reduction policy, which we had at last meeting.
Basically, as I mentioned in the last meeting, this, this is basically just a guideline, a starting point, more, they're continuing on with the community involvement, including municipality. Um, and I'm amenable to changing it, making whatever you'd like, but I believe that, uh, the policy, either change it now or going forward, but the policy is,
Yep.
Will help us quite a bit.
Yep.
Uh, especially now that I'm here tonight, that, uh, you know, if we get green energy and the whole thing, this gives up, this will give us a lot of points.
Mm-hmm.
With, with the-
With the state.
With the state.
Right. I, well, first I wanna thank the whole Green Community Committee for working on this and for every, you know, from the beginning of when you guys started out, and progress has been awesome with the police car and the, and that nice grant for, and all the lighting upgrades throughout town look, look tremendous.
The roofing project actually, they're gonna pull a permit tomorrow.
Okay.
And it'll start Wednesday on November.
So the fire department will have insulation?
And then, a brand new roof.
And a brand new roof. Great, and that's the, just to, to, um, in the, it's the same type of insulation that the elementary school has, because it's a post and beam, uh, yeah, structure, right, okay.
So, hopefully going forward, we can, you know, get better as we go along, and I, I'm excited about it, I like, I'm, I'm excited about the progress that's being made.
Great, very good.
So if you have any recommendations on the changes of this policy, uh, like I say, it could be, could be changed at a later time, but, uh, you know, I, I just would respectfully request that the board approves, uh, a policy for municipal buildings.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did read this policy, and I totally support, um, an energy reduction policy for town buildings. My main concerns are with this building and the impossibilities that I'll be facing as facility manager.
Right.
Some of the requirements here are not gonna be doable in this building.
Right.
That's what I'm just saying.
Yeah, we understa- I think we all understand that, that, uh-
And as I said, it's, it's a guide, it's, it's a draw, okay, so if you're looking to replace, uh, do anything with this building,
Right.
Whatever we do should, should be aligned with this policy.
As far as general maintenance and, you know, preventive maintenance and-
Oh yeah, things like that, we can certainly-
You know, we're gonna have to just repair what we have, until we have a decision on what we're actually going to do with the town hall. You need a motion, too?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, you.
I'll make the motion.
Your motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the guidelines adding to reduction policy, October nineteenth, two thousand fifteen.
You wanna second it, you did it.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Good job, John, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so our, uh, next regular meeting is Monday, November sixteenth at seven P M, and we will now do all our signatures for tonight's meeting, uh, and then we will adjourning until November sixteenth.
Next regular meeting is sixteenth, is that at the elementary school?
Nope, town meeting is next Monday, on the ninth.
Oh yeah, and, uh, right, don't forget, next, next week, on the ninth, uh, six-thirty, at the elementary school, we have our, um, special, uh, town meeting. Please come, bring your kids, they'll enjoy it, uh, we need, we need all the participation we can get. Uh, and that's what makes this whole process work.
Oh, he's just, he's getting to this one, too.
Hey, hey, got one.